Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff, and the general public to this March 24th council meeting and call this meeting to order. It's good to see a good turnout. Welcome, everyone. And at this time, I'll ask the clerk for the roll call, please.
Thank you, your worship. Councillor Clark.
Present.
Councillor Hyatt.
Present.
Councillor O'Hara.
Present.
Councillor Patel. Councillor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Luzy.
Present.
And we have a quorum, your worship.
Thank you, and I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson, please, for the Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Odoawa, and the Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna Bag. The Town of Petrolia is located on the lands associated with the Huron Track Treaty, number 929 of 1827. And we express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play. And we are committed to working respectfully with these lands and the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to request that council declare conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and fill out the necessary paperwork.
And we have one that's a continuous conflict of interest, your worship, and that is with Deputy Mayor Field and the accounts for Lampton sanitation.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask council to approve the adoption of the agenda before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Councillor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to adopt as presented the Agenda of the March 24th, 2025 Regular Session of Council.
Any discussion regarding the agenda? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to item number seven, which is the regular council meeting held on February 24th. I'll ask for a move in a second to put those minutes on the agenda. Move by Councillor Welsh, seconded by Councillor Hyatt. And I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you, worship. And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on February 24th, 2025. And I do know we have an error of correction that is also coming forward.
Okay, would you like to do that now? Correction?
Just the members of attendance, I think. Deputy Mayor Field was gone away and you were present. So just a correction.
We regret the error.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. So correct it. Any other discussion from council, errors or omissions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to our moment of reflection. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand. And again, I just wanted to state this is in regards tonight for Irv Sullivan, who has worked with our fire department for a number of years. Thank you. Please be seated. And for those present, the actual funeral will be at the Smith Funeral Home on Wednesday, March 26th at 11:00 a.m. Visitation will take place Tuesday, March 25th from 6:30 to 8:00. That'll take us now to our roundtable announcements. And as council is aware, we rotate this. Tonight, we start with Councillor O'Hara, please.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Councillor Welsh.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Field.
Yeah, thank you. Just two things. I filled in for the mayor at the Chamber event. It was a breakfast. And did a presentation on the Town of Petrolia, which went really well. And I attended the municipal banquet the other night, and Watford did a great job, so.
Thank you, and I will also speak to that later, but thank you. All right, that'll move us to Councillor Clark, please.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hyatt.
Nothing to share, thank you.
Okay, I have a few items. First of all, I attended the Lampton County Council Budget Meeting held on Wednesday, March 5th. And the budget was approved with an increase of 5.3% that represents an increase of $79.14 on a house valued at $300,000. I voted against the budget for council's information and felt that the budget should have been reduced by 1% or $956 in reducing the increase to 4.3% to be taken out of the amount being placed in the reserve this year. I brought greetings on behalf of council and staff at the Southwestern Apprenticeship Network Gala and Awards Night at the Four Point Sheridan Hotel held on Friday, March 7th. It was a good and well-organized event. I attended the Sarnia Lampton Indigenous Health Team Funding Announcement from the Ministry of Health at the Best Western in Point Edward on Wednesday, March 19th. They received $850,000 to go towards health and mental health and other programs for the Indigenous people. It was a good event with a great turnout. I also attended the Sarnia Lampton Chamber of Commerce After Five Event at the La Keel Kuanas Community Centre on Wednesday, March 19th. That was well-attended and a good time had by all. I attended the Lampton County Municipal Banquet along with Deputy Mayor Field and Councillor Clark at the East Lampton Community Centre in Watford on Thursday, March 20th. It was a great event with a good turnout and was a great program. And I just want to add on special thanks for Deputy Mayor Field for filling in for me at the Chamber of Commerce State of Lampton in Brigden on Wednesday, March 13th. I received a number of individuals who informed me that your presentation is well-done, so thank you. I would like to finish and request once again that the residents buy local and Canadian if possible. Thank you. That'll move us on now to the different committees. We'll start with the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee. And I have Councillor Welsh and Deputy Mayor Field. Which one would like to give an update and maybe approve the minutes?
It's actually...
Councillor Welsh, go ahead.
Yes, do you want to motion for the minutes?
Well, no, I'll speak to it first.
It was our first meeting of 2025, so we elected our chairperson, who is Sarah Erwin, and made our plans for 2025 and our projects.
Great. And then you had minutes of motion would be in order to approve the minutes. Move by Councillor Welsh. I'll need a seconder. Seconded by Councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee meeting held on February 5th, 2025.
Any questions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We have Councillor Clark and Councillor Hyatt. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead on this one? Councillor Clark, your hands up. Go ahead.
There's really nothing to add that isn't covered in the minutes.
Okay, would you like to move that we approve those minutes?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll need a seconder. Seconded by Councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting held on March 5th, 2025.
Any questions? If not, I'll call the vote again. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the Petrolia Youth Advisory Committee. I'll ask, I see Councillor Patel is not present, so Councillor Hyatt, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. For this meeting here, we just had a focus meeting to determine path forward for the Youth Advisory Committee. What direction we'd like to take in the future? And I think there's a report further down in the council agenda related to the results of that meeting, so it'll be brought forth at that time.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Hyatt. And yes, it is on the agenda, and we'll deal with it at that time. On with the Petrolia North Enniskillen Fire Committee. We have Councillor O'Hara and Councillor Hyatt. I do want to mention before you speak that actually the minutes of January 30th were approved at our last council meeting, so we won't need to do that. But it does talk about the press relief flag was lowered to half-mast for Erwin Sullivan. Councillor O'Hara, Councillor Hyatt, which one would like to take the lead on this one?
Go ahead.
Councillor Hyatt, go ahead.
I think as we had already approved the minutes from the last meeting, there's not really an update other than the press release, as you've already previously mentioned.
Okay, we do have a motion before us here, just as an update. Would you move that? Move by Councillor Hyatt, seconded by Councillor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to receive an update the update provided on the Petrolia North Enniskillen Fire Committee.
All those in favor of those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us now to the Lampton Group OPP Detachment Board. We have Deputy Mayor Field, who sits on that for me now, and I'll ask Deputy Mayor Field if you'd like to give us an update, please.
Sure. Yeah, we met and we elected a new chair, which was the same chair, Greg Nemchek. We're happy to have him back as our chair, and John McCharles is the vice chair. Some of the highlights, there's a lot of the stats that are in the minutes. But they will be starting on April 1st, 2025, going out to all council and doing a presentation to us, so. Those are a couple of the highlights.
Just the motion.
I'll move the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. I'll need a seconder for that, please. Seconded by Councillor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to receive and file the update provided on the Lampton Group OPP Detachment Board. And then, your worship, there is that secondary motion that the board had presented in relation to the CSPA funding. Would you like me to read that?
Please, yeah, go ahead.
That's okay. We got you covered. And that is for the Town of Petrolia, that the Town of Petrolia requests the Province of Ontario continue to provide Ontario municipalities with funding to offset the increased costs associated with implementation of the CSPA, the ratification of several collective agreements, implementation and recommendations from the Solicitor General's Audit and Bill 124. And that while the funding provided in 2024 to offset the unexpected increases received through the annual billing statement was appreciated, there needs to be a more sustainable commitment from the province to continue to provide offsetting funding. That this motion be forwarded to all municipalities in Ontario with OPP policing, AMO, the Solicitor General of Ontario, Mr. Michael Kirzner, MPP Bob Bailey, and Premier Doug Ford. As not.
Okay. All right, thank you for that, Mrs. Pearson. I'll ask for a move in a seconder for that. Is everyone clear on that? Okay, move by Deputy Mayor Field. Are you seconding or do you have a question?
I'm second.
Okay, seconded by Councillor Hyatt. So we've already had the motion read. Any questions? All those in favor of approving that? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us on to the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority. And I'll ask Councillor O'Hara to give us an update, please.
Well, we had our annual general meeting last week, which I was unable to attend. I was ill. But so that was on, I believe, last Wednesday.
Oh.
It doesn't matter which day.
All right.
Anyway, I'm sorry, I was unable to attend that.
Okay. Would you like just to approve this update there? Okay, move by Councillor O'Hara. I'll need a seconder. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. Any questions regarding the Conservation Authority? All those in favor of approving those, that update? Opposed? That motion carries. All right, that'll take us to the Municipal Services and Traffic. We have Deputy Mayor Joel Field and Councillor Hyatt. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Councillor Hyatt. And I'll ask which one of you gentlemen would like to speak to that?
Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead. Staff continue to work with BM Ross on the R1 and R2 for the sidewalk detailed engineering. And they're getting close to going up for tender. Compost passes are on sale, as well as the backyard composters. And preparation is underway for the spring season for grass cutting and general cleanup after the winter, so. That's it.
Okay, we've had a move in a second. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, so we're all clear, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's update on municipal services happenings.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That takes us to planning and development. We have Deputy Mayor Field and Councillor Hyatt again. Let's put it on the floor for discussion first. I'll need a move in a second. A move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Councillor Hyatt. And which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead? Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Thank you. Committee of Adjustment will hear two minor variances on April 2nd. Additionally, a notice of decision from the County of Lampton to grant draft approval for Countryview Estates Phase 9 was issued on March 6th. Staff has begun to prepare the subdivision agreements for Countryview, so it's good news. Planning staff are reviewing and processing two-site plan applications currently. Several business licenses, signed permits have been issued in the recent weeks. Additionally, staff have drafted a report on some exemptions for the Tidy Yard Bylaw for developers for the construction phase. Work continues on the east sector lands in collaboration with the applicants. The focus is largely on joint servicing and easements. Staff remain actively engaged daily on property setbacks, accessory buildings, short-term rentals, municipal bylaws, business licenses, and signed permits. It's just a very busy department right now, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. I'm really pleased to hear about some of those planning issues moving ahead. On here also was the Petrolia Building Report, and I just want to let everyone know that we are up $3 million from last year more on the value of the permits, and we've got one more dwelling than last year, so that's just for your information. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's update on planning and development happenings.
Any discussion regarding that motion? All those in favor? That motion carries. That'll take us to item number 11, which is correspondence. We have items A to J. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor and then see if council wishes to pull any of those out to deal with separately. Deputy Mayor Field? Are you moving it? Okay, need a seconded by Councillor Clark. Any discussion from council on those items A to J? Now, most of this we get through AMO anyway, and they're dealing with it. Most of these already. All right, if there's no more discussion, I'll ask the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to correspondence for consideration and motion. There are none. That'll take us now to some fun part, delegation and presentations. And first on our list is Irene regarding the Sarnia and of course, the Petrolia Community Foundation for the micro grants. Irene, if you'd like to come forward, please, and welcome.
I'm Irene Clark, and I'm from the Sarnia community. I'm really nervous because I don't...
Don't be nervous. It's okay.
Okay. The foundation is thrilled to be able to present on behalf of the Petrolia Community Fund grants totaling $10,200 to six community partners who consistently give back to our community. Thank you to the selection committee who gave their time to help evaluate the funding requests. We would also like to thank the generous donors whose contributions helped to grow the Petrolia Community Fund, allowing us to put funding back into the community. As I call your organization up to receive your grant, and we would like to take a photo or take photos, please, and you would like them to say a few words and explain their grant?
Yes, I would. If you could just take them one at a time, that would be great.
Okay, so that's what I'm gonna do. So the first grant goes out to Lampton Literacy.
And please... Please state your name, too, please.
I'm Kim Jackson. I am a head coach with Lampton Literacy. I do a program for grades three and four here in the Lions Hall on Tuesday nights.
And the money will go towards specifically anything specific or...
The supplies we use and me to come up.
Great. Well, congratulations. Wait, we'll get a picture?
Just the amount.
Oh, what, sorry. Irene, what is the amount?
The amounts I don't know offhand each individually, so it's anywhere from...
Is it in the envelope? Yeah. It's okay, take your time.
Paper wrangler. All right, so it'll be for $2,000. Excellent.
Wonderful.
I'd like to mention, too, we'd like to take like a group photo after the presentation of everybody.
You can do that.
All right.
Probably do that maybe just outside when you're all done. Great.
So the next grant goes out to the Lampton Young Theatre Players. And it's for $1,500.
My name's Linda Smith, and I'm part of the group. And the Lampton Young Theatre Players are a local group of kids that are working to produce original plays. And the monies are being spent on bus subsidies, which allow students from the county to go to see the performances. So today, we finished our last bus subsidy, which was for a section of students to come from Wapo Island, our Indigenous partners, and also over 250 students from Queen Elizabeth are going to see the show because they're able to be bussed in to see them, because bussing costs a lot these days.
Linda, would you like to give a plug on what's coming up?
A good show.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Linda.
All right. Our next presentation will be to the Petrolia Community Refrigerator Group. $2,000.
Oh, great. Just a sec.
Thank you. The Petrolia Community Fund, the Petrolia Community Refrigerator, is very thankful for consideration from the Petrolia Community Foundation, Sarnia Community Foundation, and the Grants Committee. The funding will be used for the purchase of groceries and food supplies for the Petrolia Community Refrigerator. Food insecurity in our community is an ongoing concern, along with the paradox of food waste. Just a few years ago, one in five Canadians were food insecure. Unfortunately, today, it is now one in four, so we're going the wrong way. At the same time, Canada remains second in the whole world in the amount of food we waste. Apparently, we waste 58% of our available food, but not in Petrolia, because food that's surplus to other people's needs is given to those who need it. In case you're wondering, we do have a mission statement, and this is it. We believe that access to food is a basic human right. We promote the idea of "take what you need and leave what you can" as a means for our volunteers, clients, and the community to share without prejudice or stigma. We respectfully provide food insecure people with access to free food by providing a discreet, accessible facility, open 24 hours of every day, seven days a week, where volunteers stock community donations, prepared meals, food surplus donations, and rescued food. We promote community sustainability by eliminating food waste wherever possible and providing free food to anyone in need. So that's our statement. Thank you very much. We have somewhere around between 45 and 50 volunteers who do the work there. Nobody is paid, and it's kind of hard to guess, but we think somewhere around at least 150 people who regularly avail themselves of the opportunity to acquire food when they're hungry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Les. That's good.
Do you want this picture? Les, you just go stand for the picture.
All right. So our next grant is going out to the Petrolia Enniskillen Agricultural Society, and it is for $2,000.
So my name's Greg Lane. I'm a member of the Petrolia Enniskillen Agricultural Society Board of Directors. And we are very grateful to the Petrolia Community Foundation for providing us this grant to allow us to do some renovations and upgrades to our Quanza Hut, which is that semicircular green building across from the Greenwood Recreational Centre. We would like to use that space for more of an educational and agricultural displays during our fair and other community events throughout the year. Right now, it's collecting dust and mothballs and old equipment, and so not very useful to the community at large. So again, on behalf of the Agricultural Society, we are very thankful.
The other gentleman, would you like to state your name? He's... Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Our next grant goes out to the Petrolia Skating Club, and it's for $1,200.
That's great.
Hello, my name's Amanda Ray. I'm from the Petrolia District Skating Club. I'm vice president of the club. We are so grateful for this money. It's so appreciated. And this year, we're planning on buying some new vests for our program assistance that help with the Can Skate program.
That's great. Thank you, Amanda.
And our final grant tonight is going out to the Petrolia YMCA, and it is for $1,500.
Hi, my name is Tina Keshara. I am the Child and Youth Supervisor at the YMCA. I am new to the YMCA within the past year, so I've really seen how the Y serves the community and is so involved in Petrolia. One of the programs I run is Boomers, where we serve seniors, and we have a presentation for them of a guest speaker of any sort. So with the grant that we got, we are going to upgrade our kitchen, little appliances in our kitchen to help serve them different food every week and better food, and just appliances that last a little bit longer, so we're very thankful. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. I would like to thank the council for allowing us this time and the Town of Petrolia for their ever-so generosity towards the program.
And I would like to thank you for coming and bringing us to these worthy organizations. And I want to congratulate all the individuals or groups that did obtain money and on behalf of all of council. So thank you. Now, if you wanted to take a picture, can they go just step outside? And Mrs. Ellsworth will look after you. Again, thank you for coming.
See you later. Bye, Erin.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll take us on to our next delegation from a Mrs. Tammy Rankin. Tammy Rankin, would you like to come forward, please?
All right. My name's Tammy Rankin. I run a day program here in Petrolia for adults with developmental disabilities. And I think it was last summer, I had the fire chief and, was it Jessica at that time? I'm not sure, come to my place for the bylaw of my hot tub. And so I have a little blurb here. I'm a little nervous as well. I've been made aware by the current bylaw in Petrolia that states that anybody, any body of water must be enclosed by a fence that meets the bylaw standards. I'm requesting an exemption to this bylaw. I realize that the bylaw is in place to provide the utmost safety to the participants of the program itself, as well as the community. The present way our hot tub is set up, I feel exceeds the standards of the bylaw. First of all, I'd like to state that all of my participants are adults. I'm probably, there's maybe one girl smaller than me that participates, and the youngest being 24 years old. The hot tub's three feet deep. But most of all, the lid is made to be walked on by 350-pound adult, and it has padlocks on all four sides. So all four sides, you can't lift the lid. You can't do anything at this point. Of the corner of the lids, so it's virtually impossible for anybody to lift it or fall into it. And it has separate locks for those keys. I feel that having the four locks, and I think you all should have the pictures, on the gate provides more safety. It does presently have three, like, privacy pieces of fences around it. We don't utilize the backyard as part of my program. We are a community program, so every morning and every afternoon, we're in the community. They just get dropped off at my home, and we have lunch at my home if we're not at a church. Like today, we're at a church making lunch. at a church. Like today, we were at a church making lunch. I've spoken to the bylaw officer, Jessica, and to the Petrolia Fire Chief, and have come to the decision just to request this. They had come out and they kind of understood where we were coming from. It's off our bedroom door. I don't even think any of the participants know it exists. So I was just wondering if there was anything we could do about that.
Okay, and I just want to mention, first of all, and yeah, relax, don't be nervous, but council does have all the information in front of them, and they've had an opportunity to go through it. But I will maybe ask Mrs. Vandenberg in a few minutes if she wants to add anything, but I'll open it up to council first. Does council have any questions? Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Thank you.
Through me, please?
Yep, through you. We had the opportunity to talk when the mayor was away before about it. I've seen your pictures, and I agree with your, your point that you, you know, I know you're asking for an exception, but from my observation of it and what I've seen, I almost feel like it does exceed what the bylaws states, just because of the circumstances of where it's at and how you have it locked down. I don't believe that there's a lot of backyards that likely are as secure around a hot tub as yours, so I commend you for that. Just an observation, just from previous dealings, that it really does, I believe, almost exceed what our bylaw is. So, you know, I realize there's asking for an exception, but my thoughts are it exceeds it. It's not really an exception.
Again, before I open up the rest of council, we do pay a bylaw enforcement office to enforce our bylaws, and that's her job. Any other questions from council? Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Just a question through you. Maybe it's for Jessica. I'm just wondering what the actual infraction really is from the picture. It looked like it was.
Yeah, please come up forward.
So I don't.
Mrs. Vandenberg?
I actually have not been to your place. It was the building inspector that went out, Nicole. It doesn't technically meet the bylaw requirements. Just on like looking at the picture, there's a gap in between that I don't think, without going to the, going to her place and actually seeing it myself, I can't tell you if it actually does, but based off the pictures, I don't think it will meet the bylaw requirement. So I told her she could ask for an exemption. If not, she would have to apply for the permit, get the building inspectors out, and then they would have to determine yes or no if it meets the bylaw, which I don't think it does. Because there's height requirements as well from grade. I don't know if it would, just based off the picture, but I haven't been there.
So before you go, does council have any questions for our bylaw enforcement officer? Any further questions or clarification?
It's one, I guess.
Oh, Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Through you, your worship, the gap you're speaking of, is that that gate at the front?
Yeah, the gate at the front, I don't think would meet the requirement. Like where you step in.
So where's that? And then to the top. So in order for us to be able to do the gate, it's on either side of these privacy walls. There is a gap, I want to say about a day big, where that's, so nobody can get through it. Like you would actually, I don't even know, okay, I could get, but you would have to go up and under a step to go over through it. But I don't know if that's visible in pictures.
I would agree with her, like it is secure based off the pictures. I don't think anybody can get into it, which I think is the major reason why we have the bylaw. But it would not meet the bylaw requirement right now, which is why I told her she needs to ask for a delegation because it still is an exemption to the current bylaw.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for council, or Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
Through you. So it's the gap you're concerned about at the bottom.
I haven't been out to see it myself. The building inspector was out there and said it didn't meet at that time. She did put a bit of a fence up at the front because originally it wasn't working.
Yeah, originally, it was just a three pieces of fence. So I didn't want to stop my program. So we made the fence. They sent us the seven pages, like what the height it had to be, everything else. So we followed all of that. Just there's that little gap because we would have no place to adhere the fence to, to go further in.
Okay. Anything else from Council? Counselor O'Hara, go ahead. Through you, your worship. Was this complaint driven is why all this came up, or?
Yes.
Yes. A neighbor like her.
Pardon?
A neighbor, I guess.
The hot tub wasn't the complaint. The complaint was a no business license, but once we get there, then there is a hot tub that wasn't fully enclosed. So it was part of a complaint.
Yeah, I would, if I can speak to that, too. When I came to do this business, I had come to the town council, not to council meeting, but to the town office to see if I needed anything, and they had said no. So even when the complaint came through and the bylaw officer came to the door, she's like, so do you have a permit? I said, no, I was told I didn't need a permit at the time. And she's like, can you tell me who from? And that was months prior. And I'm like, I have no idea. And there had been several turnovers prior to that date. And the town was well aware of it because I was one of the recipients that got the grant last year. And the town's been super supportive of my program. So I think there was just kind of a miscommunication within it all, because I made sure to ask all those questions when I started, so.
Do, do you have a permit now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no, that's good. I'll go to, I'll get back to you, Counselor Welsh. Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead, and then we'll go to Hyatt, and then back to Welsh.
How high, if you're standing there, how high is the top of the fence?
Like the fence itself around the three sides is way above my head.
If you're standing on the deck, looking at, yeah.
Well, it had to meet the standards of the, like, we got the pages that we had to meet. So it meets those standards.
And the steps, do they move?
They have to come off in case the hot tub needs to be fixed to get underneath to the mechanics.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
I don't have any further.
You're okay? Counselor Welsh?
So your understanding was that, that it didn't meet because you didn't have the gate, and you have since put the gate on?
Yes, because I didn't want to. I have 20 families that come to my house, so I didn't want to stop their service to do that. So we put the gate up right now, but we would like the exemption, just because now not only does it have four padlocks, it also has a gate with a padlock and is completely surrounded. So I just, like, at this point right now, it's, I feel like it exceeds anything needed.
So just so we're clear, what is the exemption, just to exempt this from the, from the bylaw to proceed? Is that acceptable?
So I think I'm a little confused. So I just, so is it the exemption to not have to have the, the gate? Because with the gate now, it's currently in compliance. I don't think it still is in compliance, but I'm not, like, she didn't apply for a permit, so I haven't sent a building inspector out.
Okay, okay. And that was something we didn't know. So when the, the fire chief and the bylaw officer come out, Nicole, nobody had said anything about that. So we, they sent us the seven pages. We built it accordingly.
So is the exemption, the request to allow for the gap as it stands, but the gate will continue to be?
Well, at this point, there's no point for us to pull off the gate. It's screwed into there. So.
I guess, just so you understand from our, we, council needs to know exactly an exemption that you're looking for to be able to put that forward.
Right now, the, the gate would not come down, but like, as it stands, it has five locks to get into.
Yeah, we'll do it one more, and then I think I'll ask for direction or a motion. Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Through you. My recommendation or my thought, and I can move it as a motion, is that we have the county attend, determine if the current situation is compliant, and, and then report back to us of what the exemption would be if, if we're considering it, if it's still required. That gives you an opportunity to maybe attend with them and, and determine it. So like, the pictures look like it's, I'm surprised you use your hot tub. It's in a cage, like it's. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not even easy for us to get into our own hot tub right now.
No.
So, okay, so.
I don't imagine there's.
I'll need a, I'll need a second on that for further discussion, seconded by Counselor Clark. So I'll pass, I'll give the clerk a chance to put something together here first, and then we'll read that. So we're all clear before the vote.
She's working on that. Can I ask a bylaw question about the hot tubs?
Go ahead.
In the, sorry, through you. So in the bylaw, it says for fencing that it needs to be an open body of water, and a hot tub is 90, probably 8% closed unless you're in it. Is that still considered an open body of water?
It is.
So the motion, please, that the council of the Town of Petrolia requests that the county bylaw officer attend to the site to see the current installation and determine if the security fencing put in, in, put in place meets compliance of the intent of the bylaw, or if an exception is required.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? Counselor Hyatt?
Here, I'll just make a comment. Based on that, on the picture, I would say that probably 98% of the hot tubs in Petrolia probably don't have what this hot tub has. Yeah, so I, I think sending out building officials would not really be required because of that. There, there's no other hot tub in town that probably has that. So I would say we don't need to do that, but that's just my opinion, and we can accept as is. But I will make that my opinion now.
Thank you, but we do have a motion on the floor. We'll deal with that. Any other questions? If, if not, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. Oh, is that, sorry, I better see that again. All those in favor. One, two, three, opposed. That motion carry. Oh.
Are you voting?
Yeah.
You have to vote.
Put your hand, who's, who's in favor again? Put your hand up. Yeah.
Three.
And who's opposed?
Two.
Two.
So it carries.
So it carries. Yeah, so it's carried. Okay, do you understand that?
Yes, I do. I just have one. If it doesn't meet because of this gap, do I come back? What do I do next?
You can, but you have to remember, we still rely on our bylaw enforcement officers to enforce our bylaw. It really makes it awkward when we start setting a precedent or giving special approval to break that bylaw. So, but yes, you could come back, but hopefully, if you can work things out, that would be the best.
So then if we, if the, if the gate works, then I can take all the padlocks off the lid, which are safer than the one, because it doesn't require that I have padlocks on the lid, which there's four padlocks. So that's not even a requirement. So I could take all of those off and just have a gate, which is way less safe. And I understand what you're saying, but if I meet the bylaw, I don't have to have the locks on the lid.
But it has to meet the bylaw.
But you don't mean, yeah, as long as it meets the bylaw, that's great. It, but let's see what happens. Okay. Thank you both for coming, and Jessica, don't go away yet. No, please be seated. All right, next, we have on, we have a delegation from Tammy, oh, sorry, we have it from Barbara Vanderwall. If you'd like to come forward, please?
Hi there. Thanks for entertaining me tonight. I assume you all received my email.
Yes, we have all the information. Yes.
So I am the owner of 4169 James Street, which is right across from the fire hall. I'm sure you're all aware of the property. It can be a bit overwhelming sometimes with the amount of stuff that the guy has in his yard. So I, my parents owned this house since the 90s. I bought it in 2008, and actually, my daughter was a baby in that house, and then we moved on. So the guy living there, his name's Stan Wilson, he's on ODSP, he's on disability. And so he's lived there since 2011, and we get rent directly from the ODSP. He doesn't have spare money whatsoever to speak of. And so back in June, there was a nice complaint from the neighbor. So the bylaw officer came out, and no one was on site, so she left her card, and we got an invoice for $70. So then there was another complaint in, at end of July. There was a site inspection, she took pictures, and she issued an order and posted it. There was another invoice at the end of July for another order issued and posted. And then in January, I received two invoices amounting in roughly $2,000 for a company that came on and put in eave troughs and downspouts on the garage. So we've, we've owned this since the 90s, and it's never had eave troughs or downspouts on the garage. It's not a great garage. And in fact, like, I told the guy I should just take it down, and he said, I need a place to put my motorcycle. So he kept it. I do believe that the, the neighbor that doesn't like this fella is making a lot of complaints. And this is the reason why these fines have come about. I don't think that there's ever been pooling in the neighbor's yard caused by this garage, because I lived there myself, and we've had it since the 90s, and it's never been something that's happened. So my question is, like, if there's a series of, of fines established by complaints made about this guy, he can't afford it. And ODSP, they paid for the first, like, $70 invoice, the $240 invoice, and the 9388 invoice. They won't pay for anymore. So he can't afford it. And me being the landlord, I've, I can't afford three months' rent because of a complaint from the neighbor. And so I'm going to have to kick the guy out unless something can be done about it. It's, my conscience won't let me do that without trying to plead for him, because he's on ODSP. The max amount that this can be paid for rent is $947 a month. So they won't pay for anymore. There's nothing in their budget for it. So I can't risk keeping him there if a neighbor is going to complain about him all the time, and he continues to get more and more fines. So I'm not sure what to do in this situation, so I'm pleading with the Town of Petrolia to help me out on this one, and hopefully waive these last two invoices so that he can remain in the home. I mean, he pays right now 887.55 per month for rent. I, if I got rid of him, I could get triple that, but I choose not to because then he's homeless. There's no place that he could move for reasonable rent. So again, I plead with the, the town to see if they can waive these invoices so he can remain as a tenant.
Okay, thank you for that. I will make a couple statements. I mean, the, whether there's a complaint, complaint or not, the point is your house must not meet the bylaws far as, you know, the, the conditions or whatever needs to be done. The other thing I want to make clear, it's the landlord being you who's responsible for those costs, not the tenant or someone living in there. Whoever owns the building is responsible. That's my understanding.
Your agreement with the tenant. So my agreement with the tenant is that if he, I was going to take down the garage. He asked me to keep it. I said, any upkeep with the garage, then it's on you. So that was our agreement back in 2011. Regardless, what about validating if it's a true necessity? I mean, again, we've had this garage since the 90s, and there's never been a complaint about it. There's never been pooling in the neighbor's yard. So how do we validate that that's an actual requirement to stop pooling in the neighbor's yard?
My understanding, again, in the Property Standards Bylaw, and I have to think back on this, but there's a number of things where your house has to be up to a certain level. And again, the reason for that is so you don't depreciate, say, your neighbor's house if your house isn't capped up. But I'll, I'll open it up for council's discussion, and then maybe I'll ask Mrs. Vandenberg to see if she has anything to add. Counselor O'Hara, go ahead.
Through you, your worship. Now, just so I'm clear, the county had the eave troughs put on?
So the tenant said he was going to do it. He got halfway through it, then.
Okay.
Lost his.
Next question is, so you have eave troughs and a downspout. The same amount of water is coming off the roof before they put them on?
I say.
You know, and if you want to, if you want to go around town, you can probably find 100 or more garages that don't have eave troughs on them.
Your worship, just for clarification for Counselor O'Hara, he may not have been present. Actually, that was a direction of council to put the eave troughs as a property standards order.
Okay. I think the, again, the whole idea of property standards is not, I mean, you get complaints and they have to deal with it. That's why we pay the county to do that. But you've got to keep that up to a certain level so you're not depreciating other properties. Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Pardon me. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the bylaw states that you can't cause water runoff off of your own property onto someone else's, whether it runs off your roof or runs across your yard into their yard. Is that not correct?
That is correct. That's a different issue as well, but you're right.
Whether it pools or not, right? It just, you can't cause water runoff to go onto your neighbor's property.
That's correct. Deputy Mayor Field?
ODSP paid three of the fines? And what was their reasoning for paying them?
Make sure that he still had a place to stay.
But they said no to a fourth?
Because of the amount, it's like $2,300 in total.
Okay.
This has been going on for some time, though. This has been going on for some time though, hasn't it? Not according to Yeah, okay. All right, any
This guy's been there since twenty-eleven, so it's
Right.
A, a new complaint from a neighbor, uh, must be a new neighbor. I'm not sure, but I just don't, I think my conscience can't take it if I didn't give this a try and try to convince the town to waive it so we can keep him as a tenant, so he's not homeless. So this is my intention. I get what you're saying and I get why the bylaws are there. But there has to be some sort of mechanism in place. If there's a neighbor that just hates the guy and wants to complain about him all the time, how do you stop that from happening? Like, a noise complaint is seventy dollars when he wasn't even there to receive the complaint. So is there some sort of mechanism in place to avoid some cranky neighbor from perpetually complaining about another neighbor and continuously harming them financially by this?
Well, we can, we can certainly deal with that. The point is your house must not meet the bylaw. That's, that's my concern. Um, sorry.
Sure. Uh, in relation to frivolous and vexatious, um, complaints, we do monitor those for them. They are complaints do have to be provided through an actual legitimate complaint, uh, a written complaint. Um, and that is when the bylaw enforcement officer determines the validation of it before moving on to the next step. So they, if, if there is something valid, which we refer to as founded or unfounded, then they progress it depending on what is found upon the initial, um, response to the complaint that is received.
And that, but there are two separate issues, I mean.
Like if, if the bylaw officer comes out, is there not an invoice immediately issued to that house owner for even coming out?
If it is found, it, you're
Yeah.
If the complaint is found to be founded, then yes, there are expenses. That is how council has their structure. Is that anything that is a founded complaint is, is um, the responsibility of the homeowner, not the responsibility of the tax base and whole.
All right, so if there's a noise complaint and there's no one home to receive any bylaw officer to discuss it, how does that get validated?
Thank, um, Mrs. Vandenberg, can you help us with this? Can you, are you aware of this situation? Would you like to come up for a second, please? And I can start it off. I just want to be clear. So there are certain areas of the house that did, does not meet the property standards bylaw that need to be corrected.
So there was a couple of complaints on this property. Um, there was also tidy yard complaints as well, which is probably the other invoices that were received.
Okay.
Um, like you said, this file was last summer and I didn't read it before I was going to come. Um, there was a noise complaint originally. I'm pretty sure I marked that as unfounded. Um, so they shouldn't have been invoiced for that one. Well, I, I don't send out the invoice. I'm just saying I did mark it as unfounded. If I don't hear noise, I will mark it as unfounded, but I still would have left my card and talked to him about it when he finally called me. But there are tidy, there was tidy yards on that one as well. And then there was another complaint with the property standards of not having eave troughs on the garage. Did clean up the yard, yes.
I'll open it up. Any questions from council to the bylaw enforcement officer or whoever? Counselor Welsh.
Through you, are all these complaints coming from the same place?
Yeah. Thank you. Counsel O'Hara.
Well, like going back to my previous point, whether you've got downspouts or not, you're going to have the same amount of water coming off the roof. So, so even by, by doing that, he can still complain in the spring that all, there's water pounding in my yard, it's coming off the roof. What do you do to fix it? Put a catch basin in? And a storm sewer?
But I think Counselor Herron, correct me if I'm wrong, it may say in our actual bylaw that you have to have eave troughs. And if that's what it says in the bylaw, then the staff are just, uh, just enforcing our bylaw. So I think it's, it's, again, it's to protect the houses beside it so they don't appreciate in value. Uh, but I'll stop there. Anything else? Counselor Welsh.
Um, through you, I can appreciate that you have an agreement with your tenant, but I believe it is the landlord's responsibility regardless of any sort of side agreement that you might have with your tenant.
But again, like, um, Counselor O'Hara said, you could go around the town of Petrolia and there's probably a hundred houses like that. And the fact that it's, this guy is downtrodden man. It's just, it's just a really sad situation in which he is the focal point. You know, personally, I'm not a big fan of the guy either, but I also don't want to see most. So is there anything that the town can do to help the guy?
I just want to back up to what Counselor Welsh said to make it clear. It still is your responsibility to maintain that house. I'll stop there. Ca, Deputy Mayor Field.
Um, just one last question. Um, there would have been notification to the resident and to the landlord prior to the work being done. Do we know what period of time that was?
Months. I also tried to work with the tenant. He did say he would fix it. I gave several extensions, talked to him several times. It never got done. I also came to council with the quotes. Um, it took a while to get quotes as well.
See, I even talked to him a cou, a couple of times and he said he had it handled and all that kind of stuff. I mean, my family's in construction. I could have done it myself for, you know, a quarter of the price. If I knew that was the intention of council, but that's not what I understood.
Counselor Welsh.
Um, through you, is, is there any way, um, I don't see any way around this. So is there a way for some sort of payment plan that we can accommodate?
Mrs. Pearson, go ahead.
Through you, your worship, and I'm looking to our deputy treasurer. We do establish agreements for payment plans. Um, so I believe she could make an appointment to meet with the deputy treasurer and then we could establish an agreement for a payment plan. Yes.
Thank you. I think that's, uh, very reasonable. Okay. Counselor here, this, I think this is, I'm going to wrap this up or we're going to be going on all night. One more.
Going back to it, the fact is we have a bylaw in the town that you have to have eave troughs and downspouts. That's fine. Lots of people don't have them, but that's fine. This person got caught without them. But we shouldn't be issuing an order that's not going to fix the problem. Like, but you could put eave troughs and downspouts, but you still got the same amount of water. So if you're going to do something, do something that'll fix the problem. This is not, this is not fixing the problem at all.
I just, okay, thank you, Counselor Herron. Again, remember bylaw enforcement officers doing their job in just enforcing our bylaw the way it's written. But I think, I think I'm going to stop it here. I'm going to ask, does council have any direction? And finish this off, or will we just leave it to the point that you need to meet with our, uh, deputy treasurer to see if he can work out a, a financial payment. But again, uh, we're entering a real dangerous precedent here for council to step in to start doing these things on our bylaw. No, none, nothing else? Okay. Thank you for coming to address council. I would suggest you meet with, uh, uh, Mrs. Strand if possible. Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on in the agenda. We have, uh, the council announcements, the community recognition and awards. Uh, you have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five community announcements as presented.
Thank you. Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
The Petrolia Community Theater show runs this week. They're rehearsing right now, uh, much quieter than a fiddle show. Um, but get your tickets. I think they're moving pretty quick.
Good news. Thank you. All right. I'll ask the clerk to, uh, read that motion.
Uh, we have your worship.
Oh, okay.
We have a move in second, uh, Counselor Clark and Counselor Field.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the first opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. I'll ask the public, is there anyone here wishing to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the financial accounts report. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four through March seventh, two thousand and twenty-five general financial accounts.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Not at this time.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. We'll go on to the next item.
This is a conflict of, uh, interest, your worship, from Deputy Mayor Field.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And please note that she, Deputy Mayor Field has moved back from the table. There is a motion on the floor. I'll ask for a move in a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four through March seventh, two thousand and twenty-five Lampton sanitation accounts.
Any further discussion? Counselor Clark, again, anything to add? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. And please note Deputy Mayor Field is back in the chair. Um, there is chair and we'll move on to item number seventeen. We have a report from Mrs. Pearson, Director of Legislative Services Clerk, Deputy Operations regarding the Petrolia Youth Advisory Committee. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. And I know it's lengthy, but I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Absolutely. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia, sorry, my, here we go. The council of the town of Petrolia received and filed the report of the Director of Legislative Services Clerk Deputy Operations dated March twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five regarding dissolution of the Petrolia Youth Advisory Committee as a standalone advisory committee of council and the next steps. And that the Petrolia Youth Advisory Committee form as a subcommittee to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee of Council and that the Director of Legislative Services Clerk Deputy Operations be directed to dissolve the Petrolia Youth Advisory Committee as a standalone advisory committee of council and the associated terms of reference. And that the Director of Legislative Services Clerk Deputy Operations be directed to amend the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to include the Petrolia Youth Advisory Committee to become a subcommittee.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any further discussion? And I just want to state, I was there as well with Counselor Hyatt. It was a, it was a discussion for a lengthy time. But I think I'm pleased with the outcome. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Um, that'll move us on to, again, Mrs. Pearson, uh, Director of Legislative Services regarding the two thousand and twenty-six municipal election voting method. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Legislative Services dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five regarding the two thousand and twenty-six municipal election voting method. And that staff be directed to participate in the joint RFP with other municipalities within the county of Lampton and administering internet voting for the two thousand and twenty-six municipal election.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Go ahead, Counselor Hyatt.
I, I think it, it just ties into the election, maybe not specifically to the voting, but just if, if we make the deputy mayor an elected position as opposed to an appointed position, what impact does that have on this electronic voting method?
Sure, go ahead, Mrs. Pearson.
So currently our, um, the rules around how the deputy mayor appointed are, are through, uh, council's procedural. So we would have to amend that and amend the position within the structure and I'd have to look on the date for the deadline for what you can amend a structure of council. So similar to if we were to add or delete any, uh, seats at council, we'd also have to be specific to a secondary, um, election position for deputy mayor.
But this voting method would have no impact on whether
No, 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 should that happen? Yeah, no, absolutely not.
That's all. Thank you. Mrs. Pearson, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't, but I believe Counselor Herron may.
Oh, Counselor Herron.
Just so I'm sure about that, this is exactly what we did in the last election. That's all I want to do.
Through you, your worship.
We, we did have paper ballots on the election day in the last election.
No, but this is, this is, uh, the way that we've been doing the online electronic voting. Yes, this is the same methodology.
That's the same, but we did allow on the, on the actual voting day, if you wanted to get in to get a hard copy and vote, you could. Okay. This will not allow for that, but we will have it open on election day for anyone coming in to ask if they'd like help with, to do it on, on their iPad or on a computer. Yes. So that is a bit of a change.
Through you, your worship, it's not a change. It's the direction of council of that committee that this would be that we perform that from one additional election, which we did. Um, there was not a high voter turnout at that paper ballot location. It was actually a very low voter turnout. Um, and so it did not show an increase to the participation in the election by having that. We actually had an eight percent less voter turnout by having the paper hard copy available at one station, one on election day.
Okay, and I understand that, but, but I just want to clarify, but it is a change. We're not doing that. And we did state it would be for the last time we would do that. But this will, there'll be no paper copies. I want to make that clear. It'll all be done electronically, but we will help anyone that needs help on election day.
They will still have a, a, an electronic ballot that they're able to utilize.
Okay. Are we all clear on that? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Okay, that'll take us on now to the tidy yard bylaw exemption for developers. We have a report from Mr. Trevor Benjamins, our senior planner, regarding the tidy yard bylaw exemption. Um, I'll ask for a motion. Um, but before I do that, I think I'll just open it up though, for we've got a recommendation for option one and option two.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, we'll just need a clarification on which option when you do call for the motion.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up for council for a motion. There is a motion here, but it doesn't state which option. So I'll need a, I'd like someone to come forward to tell me which option you'd like. Counselor Welsh.
I'll move that we accept, um, option two.
Okay, seconder for that. Deputy Mayor Field, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please, stating the option two.
And that is for, sorry, my apologies, I'm, I was deleting as we went. That the council of the town of Petrolia receives the report of the senior planner, Trevor Benjamins, dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five regarding exemptions from the tidy yard bylaw for developers and that council direct staff to pursue one of the following, or to pursue option number two, a ten-foot buffer exemption. Staff be directed to prepare an amendment to the tidy yard bylaw allowing developers to maintain only a ten-foot buffer around each occupied residence and the entire subdivision while exempting undeveloped areas from grass height restriction outside of these buffer zones.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Uh, before I call the vote, Mr. Benjamins, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Welsh.
Um, through you, uh, Mr. Benjamins, where did we come up with the ten-foot buffer as a option?
Go ahead, Mr. Benjamins, please.
Through your worship, um, it's through staff's research, it's been, um, a common practice of other municipalities. Um, there is, uh, some municipalities use a six-meter buffer, but, um, I thought that was a little bit extreme, so we went with a three-meter, ten-foot buffer in this instance.
Or did, was there any talking with developers or people in the specific neighborhoods about whether that would be an acceptable option?
Through your worship, uh, no.
Actually, and, uh, to add to that as well, I, I don't, I, you may have been away, uh, Counselor Welsh, that actually came before council with the opportunity for developers to come and address.
I don't think they came. That's, that showed up, yes. All right, any other questions from council? Counselor Hyatt?
Yes, uh, my concern is with the undeveloped lands having uncontrolled growth. Like it's we're going from being, you know, nicely manicured to you could have five-foot weeds or six-foot weeds in an undeveloped area. Like, is there a, is there an option of adding, you know, maybe the, the weeds still have to be maintained to certain height of, say, sixty centimeters or
Mrs. Pearson, would you speak to that, please?
So, uh, through your worship to Counselor Hyatt and, uh, council, that's currently what we have in place. And that's what the concern, the complaint was brought forward to council was that maintaining that is, um, something that developers struggle with. So that is currently, as you've noted, that maintained level is what our bylaw is currently in place to, to require.
Right, but in this undeveloped section, we could say that they're allowed to have grass that's, you know, sixty centimeters high. So that they don't have to maintain it to the same level as the buffer zone, but they still need to maintain it to some level. And when we do the, okay, so can I make a amendment to that motion to add a sixty-centimeter grass height in the
I can speak to that. Go ahead.
Is it to amend the current bylaw or add, or sorry, the amend, to amend the current option two, or is it to make an addition to option as well?
I think option two says that they would not have to do any work in the undeveloped space. So it would be a modification to an amendment to option two to say that the grass height in the undeveloped space should be sixty centimeters.
Through your worship, we should bring an amendment forward first and then we can speak to this as amended.
All right, I'll need a seconder for that amendment. I, I just want to be clear. Does everyone kind of understand the amendment here? All right, first of all, is there a seconder for that amendment? If there's no seconder, then that, 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 that's lost. That's good.
Um, through you, what is the height that you're recommending?
Sixty centimeters.
Sixty centimeters.
Roughly twenty-four inches.
Yeah.
All right. Are you going to second that?
And I just want to make sure I have the motion correct here, just.
Okay.
Again. Okay, so if, uh, Counselor Hyatt, if you can just, um, that the motion be amended.
You require grass be maintained at sixty centimeters.
Okay.
Twenty-four inches.
Sorry, is that for the whole area? Nope. Yeah, just, sorry, just, I'm just, yeah, thank you. Uh, that the motion, so are we twenty-four inches? Is that what we're asking for? Okay.
Sure.
And you require grass be kept contained to twenty-four inches within the buffer zone.
Uh, no, outside.
Outside of the buffer zone, so, thank you.
All right, so before we go any further, I'm going to ask Mr. Benjamins, do you have anything that you'd like to add regarding that?
Um, no, I, I think that's an acceptable approach to control weeds outside of that buffer zone, because it, it doesn't really matter for smaller subdivisions, but when you get into larger subdivisions with more undeveloped lots, I think it makes sense to set a maximum height that's suggested, so, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that motion as well.
Good, thank you. All right, so we're going to vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment? Two, three, four, opposed. Okay, that carries. Now we'll vote on the motion as amended. Is everyone clear with that, or do you need it read again? We're all clear? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us on to our next item, Council Remuneration and Expense Report. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion before you on the floor. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. Any discussion from council? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on now. We have a report from Jessica Vanderburg, Bylaw Enforcement Officer, regarding her quarterly and year-end enforcement updates. I'll ask for a motion to put that on the floor, please. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Bylaw Enforcement Officer, Jessica Vanderburg, regarding the quarterly and two thousand twenty-four year-end enforcement updates.
Thank you, and again, I'd like to thank Mrs. Vanderburg for that report. And Naren Nata as well, uh, I think it's really informative, and what I want to state is to let the people know in Petrolia, we do have bylaw enforcement. There's been some discussion for some time that we do not, but we do have, as you've seen here. And before, um, I call the vote, I'll just ask, uh, Mrs. Vanderburg, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that? Report opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us on to finance. We have a report from Annette Strand, Manager of Finance, Deputy Treasurer, regarding the two thousand twenty-four independent financial audit. We have a motion before you. Again, I'll ask the move in a second to put that on the floor. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Clark. And again, Mrs. Strand, please come. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is, um, just a formality for the audit before they come on site. Uh, they will be here all week. Uh, this is a new improvement to the process, so you'll see this engagement letter coming forward each year.
Okay, and if you can keep pushing them to come even earlier, that's good too. All right, any questions for Mrs. Strand while she's here? If not, thank you for coming to address council. I'll call the vote. You read that motion again.
We did, your worship.
Okay, all those in favor of approving that motion? Oppose, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us now to a report from Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, regarding age-friendly expo participation. You've got a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications, dated March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, regarding the Town of Petrolia's participation in the Age Friendly Expo.
And Mrs. Ellsworth will be disappointed if I don't ask. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time, your worship.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving that motion? Oppose, that motion carries. And again, from Mrs. Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, we have the Jay's Care Canadian Local Government Partner Program. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to endorse the report of the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications on behalf of Tara Wagner, Marketing and Special Events Associate, dated March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, regarding the Jay's Care Canadian Local Government Partner Program, and that council approves staff to proceed with the program.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mrs. Ellsworth, anything you'd like to add to that?
Just my congratulations to Tara for the application. This is, uh, in conjunction with our Blacktop Baseball Program, which is an incredibly important program in the Town of Petrolia, and it has been for as many years as I can recall, and probably longer. Um, people of all abilities get a chance to play softball. And with this, uh, Jay's Care Program, they get a Blue Jays t-shirt. So that, and they, uh, the coaches go through a program, um, that just makes the program that much better for them. It provides them with some new equipment. Um, I think it's going to be a blast for those folks, and, uh, I've already heard they're looking forward to beating the fire department again this year, so.
That's great. Thank you, Mrs. Ellsworth. That's exciting, and, uh, uh, please pass on our thanks to, uh, Tara Wagner as well. Any other discussion from council? Did I read that? I can't remember.
Did your worship.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving that motion? Oppose, that motion carries. And we have another report from Mrs. Ellsworth, Director of Marketing Arts and Communication, regarding the Petrolia Business Association Quarterly Updates. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Downtown Business Liaison dated March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, regarding the Biz, Petrolia Business Association's Quarterly Update.
And I just want to say, I'm pleased to see that report. I think that keeps council updated. Uh, Mrs. Ellsworth, this will be the last time for a while. Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Um, I, I would maybe defer to our Downtown Business Liaison, uh, yeah, but I believe that the promotions so far this year have been going really well, and we're seeing lots of local support, so that's a very important thing.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Ellsworth. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the Parks and Recreation. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities, regarding an amendment to the Refreshment Vehicle Bylaw. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, dated March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, regarding an amendment to the Refreshment Vehicle Bylaw, and that by, that the bylaw amendment before council this evening be endorsed.
Thank you. And I just want to mention, I think this is good. I think due to the flooding, I think it's a good and fair arrangement. I'll ask council, if you have anything you'd like to add or speak to? If, oh, Counselor Hyatt?
I was wondering, uh, which specific parking lot it would be.
Mrs. Bullock, go ahead.
Through your worship, uh, it'll be in the back parking lot here off Wing Still, Wingfield.
Right behind the building.
Right behind the building. Uh, there's already electrical in the van shell that will provide them with, uh, the services.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Mrs. Bullock, you'd like to add?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Oppose, that motion carries. There is nothing for water and wastewater. This is the second opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. If there's anyone wishing to address council, please come forward. Okay, if not, we'll move on to the new and unfinished business. We do have a motion from myself regarding a change of council meeting, uh, day to Tuesday. I do want to clarify the time that was on the original was six o'clock. Uh, the one that came out says four, but it's basically Tuesday at six o'clock would be the main council meeting. But it's open for-
They are printed on that transposition.
Okay, thank you. Um, but it's open for discussion, so I'll open it up for discussion. I'll need a seconder to, to get that on the floor. Seconded by Counselor Welsh, and because it was on the last one, we deal with it tonight. Open for discussion. Counselor Hera.
We, we dealt with this once before, this council did, about moving into Tuesday, and I, at that point, our local newspaper was really opposed to it because for getting things to print and so forth like that, so, um, I, I, I don't know if I can agree with this or not.
That's, that's, I'm, it's open for discussion. Uh, I think the main issue for me is starting maybe at six o'clock rather than seven. But we do have this motion on the floor. We'll have to deal with it, and then decide what you want to do from there or whatever. Counselor Wells, do you want to speak to that?
Um, I, I don't think we need a change to Tuesday. I think we need to back up the agenda. We're here again, once again, at the pleasure of our residents, all of us in this room. And, uh, I think backing up the agenda, so there's a bit of extra time ahead of it to, uh, to, for them to ask questions or for our, us to ask questions. And, um, what was the other? And if we did, we didn't have to do it right away, so if there are other things that have to be considered for staff when people are bringing things forward, we can, you know, get our things for sixty days or whatever and say, now our agendas are going to be due on a different day, and I'm not opposed to backing it up to, um, six P M., but I think Mondays is fine.
I'm okay with that, too. So, Mrs. Pearson, do we need to vote on what we have here first?
Motion on the floor to be voted on first, and then any secondary motions can come from there.
Okay, so we'll deal with the motion first. All those in favor? Opposed. So that's not carried. Now, open it up for a motion, which basically, we're already Monday. All we would need a motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Pearson, is to change the time to start at six o'clock rather than seven, if that's your wishes.
And then, uh, just to add to that, if I may, your worship, on the evenings that we have public meetings and special meetings of council, those would also back up.
Correct.
An hour.
Correct, yes. Counselor Hera.
Okay, um, I, I'm not in favor of the six o'clock. Uh, I don't work, but most people do, and it can rush things, you know, if they're working till five o'clock or whatever.
We, we can leave things the same. If you decide there's no action, we'll just move on. Counselor Welsh.
Um, I mean, the six or the seven makes no difference to me. I, I would like to move that we back up the agenda, so the, the agenda is out earlier. Then I would like to amend this or whatever, wherever stage we're at here, to back this up, so the agenda.
Through your worship, you have a motion right now that we do need a mover and seconder for to move the meetings from six P M. backwards, so that's your first motion that needs to be addressed. That would be a completely separate motion.
But i- if we decide not to even start at six, we don't need any motion, we don't.
You, there, that, correct, but the discussion you've had is for the motion, but that hadn't received a mover and seconder prior to discussion.
So again, I'm asking for council's direction. What are your wishes? Do you want to change the time or keep it the same? If you want to just leave status quo, then that's it. We'll just move on, okay? So we remain the same Mondays at seven o'clock. On the other one, there's a notice of motion that'll come to the next meeting.
Then there is Counselor Welsh. So do I need to provide a notice of motion to bring this up at another meeting, or?
You do not. If you, because the item is on the floor, you can bring forward a motion as you wish.
I would move that we back the agenda up a few days so that it is due out, and perhaps we put a a time lapse on that so that we, so that anyone who would, developers, whoever would be bringing something to us, we say, you know, the motion passed this evening, but we're not going to put it in place for sixty days, so people have time to adjust schedules and and things for paperwork that was due, or maybe perhaps things that were already planned.
So, are you suggesting, like, we're, we're out at what, what time we have now?
Through your worship, our procedural bylaw is by its forty-eight hours in advance of the council meeting, so I would need a determinate time for what that would be backed up to.
So are you looking at, say, like, Thursday at noon or something? Or?
I'd be saying even Tuesday by end of day if we could. Some councils have them out a week in advance.
So we do need that before we move into discussion of what that, so is it, is it?
I'll, I'll, I'll make them, I'll, I'll make a motion that we have it by Tuesday end of day prior to the Monday meeting.
Need a seconder for that? Well, that's pretty early, if that means.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it to discuss it.
Okay, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field, and I'll open that up for discussion. Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Um, you know, I, I think at one point, um, with the new council, with new members, there was likely a lot of additional items that they were reading through and going through. Um, currently, the way it is, i- it is Thursday, um, that it's, it's coming out. I, I don't have a problem with it. I've hopefully worked well with staff to be able to, um, answer my questions. Um, any other questions, I always can bring them up here. Um, but if there's any clarification I need, I feel that we do have enough time. I'm not thinking that we need to change it a, a great deal. Like, right now, Thursday, having it out, having the, the availability of a Friday. And, um, you know, I, I think maybe as, as a council, we need, if we're going to send emails to staff, our staff are very conscientious to answer emails. Put a delay on them. It's a very simple process to delay an email to come out for Monday morning. Um, and I realize staff have a lot to do on Mondays, but I'm getting my, my questions answered on Friday, so, um, I'm likely against moving, moving.
I, I too have a bit of a concern going that far back. Counselor Clark, I'll go Clark, and then I'll get Welsh.
I guess this, pardon me, if it is currently forty-eight hours, then that doesn't really meet the noon Thursday that we've been getting them at. I think that getting them at noon Thursday has been very reasonable. Like, I think that that does give us enough time. That gives us basically Thursday afternoon, all day Friday, and all day Monday to contact staff if we have questions. So maybe that we just make it that the requirement is noon Thursday and not forty-eight hours. Um, because honestly, the forty-eight hours does give them staff up till, you know, at least end of business Friday, which takes away a whole day of us being able to ask questions.
I think it usually gets out Thursday afternoon, and I can certainly live with Thursday at noon. Counselor Welsh.
Um, with all due respect, the previous motion said that there wasn't enough time. The motion from yourself said that there wasn't enough time for proper consultation and that, so that's why I am proposing that we back up when the agenda comes out.
But on second thoughts, I could certainly live with Thursday at noon. I could, I think going back too early means staff have to get it in early, and so many things would change by the time I have our council meeting, but, uh, no, I understand your point, but I, I think Thursday at noon would be good for me, acceptable.
So the motion on the floor, your worship, is four P M. Tuesday.
Okay.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Seconder, agree with that? Is there a seconder for that? Do you agree with that?
I agree.
All right, so is there a motion? Did you want to make a motion to have it out Thursday by noon? Or just leave it the way?
That point now, so.
I would just.
All right. Okay, we'll just, we'll move on. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go on now to the consideration of the bylaws.
We, you're worship, you, there is the notice of motion, um, regarding the allowance of on-street parking for a fee during the winter season.
Yeah, this is our first notice, so it'll be dealt with at the next council meeting.
Unless two-thirds majority.
Unless two-thirds want to deal with it tonight. Moved by Counselor Welsh. What was your, what's your wishes?
To deal with it tonight.
Deal with it tonight, okay? You want to second that, Counselor Clark? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of dealing with that tonight? We need two-thirds? Opposed? Well, that, uh, that'll carry. So we'll deal with that tonight. I'll need a motion. I've made a motion. I need a seconder for that. Seconded by Counselor Hyatt. And then you've got a, um, a motion, basically, um, can you read that, uh, Mrs. Pearson, a proposed motion?
Whereas the mayor and C I O. were recently approached by a resident in relation to permission to park on their street during the winter season due to the number of vehicles in their household. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the council and corporation of the Town of Petrolia direct staff to review and provide information back to council in relation to implementation of a seasonal parking pass issuance for on-street parking at a fee of fifty dollars per season to start in the fall of two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Hera.
A seasonal parking pass? I never heard of such a thing. See, like, well, why do we make things so difficult? I know the, the Works Department do a great job of cleaning the streets, but if they have to go around cars all over the place, the streets are going to be a mess, like, oh, come on.
Yeah, I think the idea was just to send it to staff for a report back. Counselor Welsh.
Also, I believe, um, there are minimum maintenance standards that I'm sure that, um, Mr. Thompson could enlighten us to. It's more risk to park cars. The snow's gonna, not going to get cleared properly. And if I may quote a mayor from Spain, this is one of my favorite quotes. It's not my duty as mayor to make sure you have a parking spot. For me, it's the same as if you bought a cow or a- It's not my duty as mayor to make sure you have a parking spot. For me, it's the same as if you bought a cow or a fridge and then asked me where you're going to put them.
Yeah. I, I do want to add councillor Hera, like the city of Ottawa does issue permits, but I'm not saying it's a good idea. No, okay. I'm not saying it's a good.
It's not nice.
For a long time, no. Any, well, again, uh, this is just open for discussion. What are your wishes here? Did we get a second or?
We do, your worship, yes.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Um, I, I'm, I disagree with this. I, I think if we, everybody's going to pay 50 bucks. Um, they're all going to then park their cars on the road and we're going to have a, a complete nightmare. Again, the minimum standards, the insurance, the liability. Um, I, I think the one thing that I have seen, um, this winter, we had a few vehicles that were left on streets. Um, that were there for a number of days, one that we had to tow. Um, and when it towed, we didn't have a plow there immediately to take the giant sides down around the shell that it was in. I just, I, I think that, you know, if anything, we, we take a look at, um, currently, maybe through you, to Mrs. Pearson, what is our, our dates?
Uh, currently we are November 1st to March 31st.
Um, you know, I, I could see December 1st as if there's no snow coming like I, but I, I can't support, um, a parking pass.
And, and I want to make it clear to council, I, I brought this forward because of concerns. I, I don't have a problem leaving things the way they are either. Councillor Hera.
Yeah, I, status quo suits me fine, you know? If we do something stupid like this, we'll probably end up hiring another person to sell the passes and, uh.
So, but we do have a motion on the, we do have a motion on the floor. Let's vote on that and then we can decide if you want to change the time period for the parking. All those in favor of the motion before you to refer it to staff or report back? Opposed. That's not carried. So now I'll open it up. Is council's wishes to change the, the month periods on the winter snow control?
Your worship, if I can speak to that before council, uh, maybe go ahead. While we do appreciate that there could be concerns with our, our current, I've done some review of this in the past when asked. We are in consistency with other municipalities. We do not enforce the, uh, the parking during a winter storm on a, just an automatic. It is something that is regular enforced as part of our opportunity. But should there be a winter storm that happens to come as we are in April right now? And there is a very, very possible, or we're coming, well, I should say, because we're not in April right now. But there is a very strong possibility of snow in April. That, that doesn't, uh, negate it, but it just, it allows us the ability that should we be experiencing something in a environment where we can't control weather? That we are able to enforce when required.
Good point. Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And I can remember a few years back when we did get storms at that time. Councillor Hyatt.
Maybe a question, maybe it's best suited for Mr. Benjamin's, maybe through you. Like what are the barriers that are preventing people from adding more parking to their houses at the current state that we would think that we should park on the street in winter? Or maybe that's a report, maybe we can ask for a report back. It's not to put you on the spot if you.
Through your worship, I would probably just say like, um, smaller lot sizes, things like that. And, and people just having, you know, each residence will have to have, provide two parking spaces and, and, you know, it gets busy when you have families and the garage gets used for storage and people want to park their cars outside and that limits parking spaces. So that's really the only reason that I can think of.
That's actually a separate item we can deal with separately too. Deputy Mayor Field.
And just a comment to that. Um, our neighborhood maybe is unique to some. Uh, we have two people that when they are full. One parks across the street, uh, where the lady only has one car. And we have the young man that parks in somebody else's driveway. So it's, this is happening, they are figuring, good neighborhoods work, work things out and, and help out. So. All right. I think, think, think there's opportunity for people to find a parking spot.
Councillor Hera.
Well, I, I think it should stay a status quo. You know, if we are going to ex- or, or let them, um, extend the dates or change the dates, then we should pass a bylaw, there are no storms allowed in November.
All right. So we, we don't have to take any, if you don't take any action, everything remains the same. So can we move on then? If there is, if there's nothing else, we'll go on to the reading of the first and second reading of the bylaws, please. I'll need a move or a second or. Moved by councillor Hera, seconded by councillor Clark. And that's to have the bylaws for the first and second time. All those in favor? Oppose, that motion carries. And I'll have a motion to read the bylaws a third time, signed, sealed and numbered. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by deputy mayor field. And I'll ask the clerk to read those bylaws.
Thank you. That is for bylaw number 09 of 2025, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to authorize the execution of an agreement between Spectre Construction, care of Mr. Floyd Vanderwall and the corporation of the town of Petrolia to provide for the lease of the property described as the north part of lot 11, concession 11, registered plan 25R 1906, part one in the town of Petrolia for the use of soccer pitches to be read a third time and finally passed. And prior to reading the next two, I do just have a note from council to extend thanks to Mr. Floyd, the, uh, Floyd and Nick Vanderwall for their continued support of the town and corporate partnerships for many years. Bylaw number 10 of 2025, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to amend bylaw 19 of 2021. A bylaw to regulate refreshment vehicles within the town of Petrolia be read a third time and finally passed. And that bylaw number 11 of 2025, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to confirm the resolutions and motions of the council of the town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including March 24th, 2025, be read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you. Any discussion of those bylaws? And I do agree, uh, Mrs. Pearson, I'm glad you made a note. I did as well to thank, thank Mr. Vanderwall for his cooperation for our soccer fields next this season. All right. All those in favor of the bylaws? Oppose, that motion carries. And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by deputy mayor field. Any discussion? And the only discussion can be as the time. All those in favor? Oppose, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And for all those present, thank you for coming to council.